I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting has been posted in the normal places. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. You have a second? All in favor then say aye.
I would make a motion that when student showcase gets here, we'll put them in.
I'll make a motion that when student showcase gets here, they will start.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye.
I second your motion. Thank you.
They're ready to go. We're going to go in front. You guys need a presentation or so we can scoot around this way then? See? Good thing you were here.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. This is Leah Johnson from the intermediate school here. And I've brought a collection of students from this school year. And we've got some representation from 2D, 3D work from 7th and 8th grade in the second quarter. Ceramics from 7th and 8th grade and 5th and 6th grade in the second quarter. And then 3D class and just new kind of conglomerate of the 5th and 6th grade homerooms. I have Alec here, he's in 7th grade. Carly's in 8th grade. Natalie is in 8th grade. Broden here is in 6th. Sawyer is in 8th grade. Got Luke in 7th, Ally in 5th, and Elena who's in 7th grade. So nice mix of different students and hopefully some different mediums and artwork that you're able to see. So what I told them that they could do is they brought a different collection of pieces, some of which they've created in the art room, but I also left it open for them to bring some pieces if they've created them at home, just to kind of show what they are super excited about as well. So starting on the end here with Ally, she's brought in some ceramic pieces. Do you want to show some of those? Do you want to say anything about them?
So I made this hippo in ceramics class and this drape bowl in ceramics class and yeah.
She loves hippos. There's another piece that she made. It's not glazed yet, just freshly out of the kiln and she'll get to glaze it on Friday. So super excited about that. Next, we've got Broden.
Okay, so I made this hat or whatever. I think it's probably going to be a hat because it has holes in it. And then I also made this jellyfish because, well, I was born in social studies and I just was doodling and stuff. And I realized that I made a jellyfish. And then I was like, oh, that looks pretty good. So then I tried it out.
He said, I'm trying to, you know, I was doodling. I said, I do it all the time. It's good. And he did, we used acrylic paint, which is super exciting. And it's a nice thick paint, really bright color. So it turned out awesome. I was super excited. He wanted to show that. So next up is Alec.
So I made these two in 2D, 3D. One is a book cover and one is an perspective drawing.
The book cover I thought was super neat. They had to either take a book that was famous, say Harry Potter or something like that, and then redo the cover. We've seen the covers, they're iconic. We've seen, you know, checked them out from the library. But, or they could make up their own and he did a mashup. So I thought that was pretty cool with Star Wars and Harry Potter wore over there on the front. All right, Luke is next. Got some other ideas.
So this I made in 2D, 3D. I was kind of inspired by this photo I saw online. So, yeah. And then this one I also saw online, but I guess I added like an extra tree and like made the tree different. And add a little more in the sky. And then I have these two ceramic pieces that I made at our creative outlet in Sussex.
Cool.
Ooh, very nice. Wonderful. Yeah, I was super excited that he was able to bring some other things. And definitely excited that he was able to use things and pictures and things that he had seen to create his pieces. All right, Lena.
Okay, so I started to draw in 5th grade and I've solely made a collection of dragons I'd like to draw. And then this is the current one I'm working on right now. Also, it's having a lot of work on it at homework every time.
She's exploring right now. We were actually talking just before we came in how to add some sort of cover or covering over the piece with a pencil or whatever she's using doesn't smudge. So she gave me a couple of ideas on that. She's also very, very excited about some of the ceramic pieces. You'll see some of those at the art show in March, which I'll talk more about in just a second. But she loves her dragons. So super awesome. All right, go next. Sawyer.
I made a drape piece and I embroidered flowers onto it. So it could be like a place where I could put like jewelry. And then I made it looks like a coaster. And then I put paint on the top of it and I flipped it over and I tapped it on the table. So I would make like a mountain type scene. And then I made this on the wheel. And I opted like the same type of technique. And then I used black around the edges. So it would like make it look neater.
I tell the students that it's really, really neat if we can create something that we can use or give to someone else. And instead of just, if they want to create the art just to simply look at it, but if you want to make it something that's useful as well, it can mean a lot to someone else. All right, Natalie.
I did a cover for Lebo and Stitch. And I did a canine. I know it was like painted kind of spidered all over. And then I did, I used plants. And then I kind of like make the plants like fall down.
Mixed media pieces. Awesome. All right, Carly.
I drew this for my friend. It's her dog. And yeah, this is like one of my first attempts at like doing fur, like realistic fur.
I'd say pretty good.
I submitted this in 4H, which like it goes to fairs and stuff. And I won a blue ribbon. It almost went to the state fair, but it was in Milwaukee County. And it's a leopard gecko, which I just got one. Yeah. I won the yearbook cover. And then I made this card for my dad because he likes hunting. I made this in 2D, 3D, I think. And it's like a soft pastel of a monarch. Because I raise them in the summer and then we go. Kira is my leopard gecko. And then Skylar is my parakeet. This is a cover I did for The Lion King. The kite started like dripping. So I just made a part of it.
Wonderful. So I hope that you're able to see just a small collection of everything that students do here at the intermediate school. I chose these students because not only do they take their time on their artwork and work really hard on things, they also are helpful to others. They are kind to each other. They ask me often if I need help with something. It's, so it's very nice to just not only have students that have an ability, but also take the time to get better at something and then also help others with it as well. Now let's, just hold on here. Maybe, maybe I will. Maybe I won't. All right. So I will close with, we have the Martin Community Art Show coming up on March, Friday, March 13th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And you'll see some artwork from these very students there along with a lot of other pieces from students not only at the intermediate school, but from the primary school, P through 4 as well. So we hope to see you there. And thank you again so much for letting us come in tonight. What time is the art show at? 4:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Is it here or next door?
It's over at St. John's UCC. Right across the street. Yes. And is that for district wide? It's district wide kindergarten through 8th grade. Pieces will be there. There's cookies. Thank you, PT. There's popcorn. Thank you, St. John's. And there's artwork. Thank you, students. That's the fun part about it. Yes. And JHS helps out. So it's a great effort by everyone at the school. So it's super fun.
So I have a question. So we heard that Ally likes hippos and we've got, you know, a lot of drawings with our pets. And Elena, you're talking about dragons and Broden does his best thinking in social studies. So, but where do we, where do we do our best creative thinking? Where do we come up with all these creative ideas? Does it just happen in art?
Well, I really come up with my ideas because like when we're going through assignments at school, I'm a little bit bored. I still do it.
Gets his homework done. All right.
But then it's like, what do I do now? So then I just do them.
I'd say probably I get my most inspiration when I'm listening to music. I don't know why.
Sure.
I get my most inspiration from the world around me or just ideas pop into my head.
I'd say probably the classroom.
I say from sometimes looking at references. Sometimes I can get some ideas from that. Or just ideas that just pop into my head.
For me, probably like a lot of outside stuff. And I like taking like photography of animals and stuff to my phone. And I usually just like recreate them in like drawings.
Mrs. Johnson, where do you get your best creative thinking done?
Outside. I tend to, if anyone has, they have sometimes walked with me outside. If you've been, they've been in my media arts class, I'm like, oh, look, it's a caterpillar. Look at that flower. Oh my word, that flower is gorgeous. And I stick my finger. So they, I really enjoy seeing, being outside, natural world. And then just chatting with people and getting out and about kind of gives you some new perspectives. But yes, that's where, that's where mine comes from.
In ceramics, we saw a vinyl squirrel.
I know. I also am terrified, like with those, that huge bank of windows is gorgeous. But sometimes I'm looking outside. We were all in something the other day and I was like squirrel. And everyone's like, where? And I'm like, it's a white one. And then it took like five minutes to get everybody back because we watched the squirrel and it was in the snow. And it was on outside. So yes, oh, the dog. There's the dogs next door. That also, I'd let the dogs out. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. There's some random moments for sure. You betcha. You betcha. Guys, have anything else to say? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very, very much. We've got a little something for you. There you go. Broden? Natalie? Thank you. Carly? Carly? Thank you. Ellen? Luke? Sawyer? And Mrs. Johnson? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Bailey, thank you for bringing it. Thank you.
I don't even want to go. You're just wearing, you have a bag and you wear your bag.
Okay, we are now on to approval of the financials.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, January 22nd.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All in the same side. Carry. We're on to the
Vote your listing for January 22nd through February 20th, 2020. General funds payroll checks numbers 553773 through 553774 for $123.28. Then check numbers 553775 through 553778 for $1,149.29. Next, direct deposit numbers 900051147 through 900051255 for $141,736.35. Next, direct deposit numbers 900051256 through 900051365 for $158,818.70. Then wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wires numbers 201900190 through 201900211 for $291,999.98. For total payroll of $593,827.60. Next, accounts payable, check numbers 54086 through 54146 for $144,262.51. Next, AP wire transfers 201900187 through 201900204 for $8,275.35. Next, we have one credit card transaction number 012020 for $17,486.84. Then ACH direct deposit numbers 192000137 through 192000151 for $977.95. For our total accounts payable of $171,002.65. For total disbursements, then $764,830.25.
I'll second. Okay, we have motion and second. Approval of financial report and bill listing. Are there any questions? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. We're on to delegation to be heard. Does anyone want to address the board? Okay, can we move on from there then to district administrator report? Action of acceptance of a donation.
Yeah, we have two donations this month. So thank you very much. We have two teachers from the, both, two teachers from both the intermediate and the primary schools. Each received $150 from the NEMIC Foundation grant. So a big thank you to Zach Lindau Insurance Agency for presenting these grants during our January 20th professional development day. So as well, we also received $1,000 for each principal from our PTO. So thank you very, very much. And that goes into the principal fund. So just looking for a motion to accept the donations as presented.
Having a motion to accept the donations as presented. I'll second.
The motion and second. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. We have no personnel actions.
Yep.
Information.
I think we're good.
Okay.
I think we're good.
We're on to today's report. We have the student achievement committee.
Sure. Our student achievement committee met on Wednesday, February 12th. It was a full day work session. Thanks for, three board member, I don't think he wasn't feeling well. But thank you for everybody who came and Jewel, you came too. So thank you. At this SEL committee, we have upwards of almost 20, 25 people. So it is a huge commitment from the district and thank you for the board's support on allowing us to do that. The first part is we really looked at our student pilot. We are going to be piloting two student SEL curriculums, social emotional learning curriculums. The first one is Second Step as well as Positive Action. And those pilots are happening now basically through spring break. We are going to be getting back together, oh, right, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, to kind of review how that's going. Our goal from the student side is to have something, a recommendation to the board for that curriculum, right around that April board meeting too. So, and right now, we hope to be able to achieve that mark. If it's not April, it could be May and then approved in June. But either way, we're right on track there too. So another part we did focus in on was onward, I'm sorry.
How many different classrooms are the, is this being crowded?
Sure. We have basically two classrooms in each grade level.
Okay.
Approximately. I think one grade, grade level only has one. But all of our pilot teachers were able to grab a friend and to help pilot with too. So we probably have upwards of almost, almost 20 teachers piloting this curriculum. So we're excited about that. Another piece we kept on working for is it's kind of doing the book study onward, which is a teacher resiliency book. It's a kind of a, there's 12 steps to teacher resiliency and it's kind of one for each month. And the group together is doing a whole group read, a book study around it. And we feel that this may catapult us into a whole district learning from that standpoint too on that onward book. So we will continue to kind of work our way through that, that book and continue to do activities to kind of showcase what we possibly could do with our staff from that standpoint. Then the third big piece is, is we continue to really work on trust. Is, is how do we really build trust? How do we define trust? And how do we see trust happen? And continue to work together as a committee to help to move trust forward in the organization all the way from peer to peer, all the way from, you know, whatever department you are in or as the board. Just continue to build trust within the organization too. So. And we're taking a look at why it's so important to have it there too. So a busy day again. We'll be back together March 17th to continue basically those three things too as well, to continue on. So it's a good meeting, good full day. That's for sure.
Okay, then we're on to board's update with principals report.
Thanks for being here again. It always feels good to come together. And as it loads, we just started off always talking about like what is happening with the non-graduate students, but our staff, and so at the primary school, we had some math, math professional development. As you know, this is the second year into this new curriculum. And what I find interesting is that after a year and hearing some of the pains that happened in the past pre or to me, how much people are feeling better and more confident around their instruction. Something you'll see too on another slide, as I've been doing a lot of observations and announcements. And most people are calling me into their math classrooms, which over the last month has happened. We've also looked at the teacher's manual and planning, something that was really out of focus is the feedback that I've seen or the observations and feedback I've been giving staff is how do you give manipulatives around math that does kids' hand, especially at the younger age? And so there's a lot of like, oh, they might fiddle with them. And that's the way we learn. So trying to like come up with processes and ways that teachers can continue to have manipulatives into kids' hands when they're processing through complex and active math. And having those talks as well. Differentiation is both in math and in literacy that we've been seeing. In literacy professional development, we've been really looking at that assessment. So Jewel, what you had asked about, that is where we're at, is how, what assessments are informing our work and not that we're just using here and then moving on from them. So otherwise, we're wasting kind of time to think that we spend a lot of time assessing kids without having the impact we want to see. So we've been using that. Abby's been really working with staff on that as our instructional coach as well. Looking at our practices, really planning for all students. So oftentimes, we do a great job identifying who needs more support or who is, you know, beyond that. But the middle group too, needs to have individualized plans as well. So we've been working through that. And then Abby went with 12 teachers to the WSRA, the Wisconsin Reading Convention that happens here in Milwaukee. And so, which was awesome to be able to give 12 teachers off to professional learn. That's a huge, huge number. Some highlights there was really focused and centered, I think, on the equity work that continues to pull. And then also, how do we get kids to be literate, enriched by, loving, joy of reading? And social emotional learning focus, Ron just kind of talked about that. We have a plan for the pilot. We continue to look at building trust and then holding our values. And how do, when they do, when they are broken, how do you move forward as a direct contact to the person you need to talk with? So those are some of the things we're working on. Also educator effectiveness, this is that cycle that mid-year has come up. So that means that our staff are tasked with coming at the beginning of the year with an SLO or a student learning objective. And so it's created this year. I kind of pushed for team created because, or content level. So you can work together collectively to ensure that the outcome comes about. And then we really were looking, not all grade levels are there, but looking at all students. And really that question is, upon the set of the year, when you come to the beginning of the year, what are you going to ensure? How will I know I'm successful with all kids? Which is a little different than in the past where we pulled out maybe a targeted group. But we really didn't have that focus of what am I going to guarantee? What is my guarantee? For this grade level and with this group of kids looking at our data. So we've really worked at that. So these look like all third graders, all third grade students will what? What are we going to ensure? And oftentimes, we look at progress, you know, many kids where they are and then looking at their progress. That's where we've come to. Or 100% 5K students will be able to do what? Like what are we guaranteeing? And then our data discussions have really come up with looking at our data, going back to, is this really worth it? What is the data telling us? Is this the data that we hold and that we think is really what we want to measure upon ourselves on? And how do we have students be part of this process? Because we're all conversations and questions that have been coming up like, how do we get this? Because we have it, but really it's more powerful with the students. So those are some of the information around student learning objective. Lots of formal observations and staff feedback. There are 21 teachers at the primary grades that are on cycle, which is their summer year. Everyone gets evaluation of the 21 are, have the formal cycle. 11 in February, 11 announced, 10 unannounced, I've gone through, and seven grade level walkthroughs and content levels. So that was a lot of great, my time being spent where I like the most in the classroom. And then also we have our instructional aides. We have nine at the primary that have their mid-years review. And what those look like is with the instructional aides, myself and whoever their direct supervisor. So oftentimes in special education, we sit down, we collaborate, we talk about like what are we seeing? And we're providing that feedback. Also this year, when I go into classrooms, I'm also giving instructional aides just a handwritten note of what I'm seeing, some positives and then some questions that I have. And then we continue to align that to emergency policies and consistency between Jay and I. Making sure that staff know what are the forms that need to be filled out. They are different. There is some autonomy here that we've used to adapt those. And we don't use the T-Scape or the, yeah, the T-Scape model. So that's one of the things that we've been working on as a staff.
I was going to echo this slide because I don't have one that says intermediate school at the top. But we have the same thing for just almost all of our mid-year SLO and PPG meetings have taken place. Six, many observations of every single teacher here I've done so far this, this school year, which averages out to about once a month. I'd like to do more, but. And then I don't have as many teachers on the formal cycle. She's got a lot of newbies next door and I don't have quite as many. So I've taken on a couple of your, your friends so that
Our share.
Yes, so we can share some staff that way. So it's just trying for Beck and I to be consistent. So when the teachers next door say, hey, what's happening for educator effectiveness in our media school? It's exactly the same thing. So talking about artifacts and all sorts of things have been kind of fun conversations there.
Okay, so these are the stamp highlights at the primary school. So these are not all the things that I just mentioned. Was one, we had the 100 days of learning. And I'm going to tell you, this 5K staff is fabulous. We have Ms. Loosick, Ms. The Mask, Sarah Phillips, Ms. Phillips, Ms. Schmidt, and, oh, Kelly Shaw, Ms. Shaw. And they did not get out of character. Like Chris Loosick dragged that thing around all day. And I was like, okay, we're just having a meeting right now. I'm like, no, no. So this was actually, kids love it. Kids also dress up. So that was a lot of fun. We have Jordan Darwin. They had built this We have Jordan Darwin. They had built this poly system. And some of this you might have seen in the smore too, but they created this, um, poly system that has allowed for us to put all of our new balls in it that we are using in our physical education classroom. So that actually pulls right up. So they store above and then it drops right down. So when we are in the unit in third grade around, um, simple machines, that's going to be a great little field trip. This is Mick Rager was recognized too for outstanding work. So thank you, Sherry, for this. That was a great highlight. Yes. So that was wonderful. And so then we had our four K, five K informational night too. And both the five K team and the four K, Ms. Bowles and, um, Ms. Rice, were there presenting and asking information along with Ron and also some of the other staff too that joined us. And then Melissa Smith, the secretary, did a great job organizing all that. So we're kind of looking at that information right now. So that was a highlight. And then we had some arts and crafts. And we just, for someone else, it really was around, that was on the fourteenth, taking time to create something personal, personal and meaningful for someone else. And staff really got into it. I love Craig Heinz in this picture because he was determined, like his was going to be. So, and I think that gave him a new look to like Craig's artistic, I mean, he maybe should have been presenting today.
I think he needed to get his wife a ballot, right?
Yeah, maybe that's why. And then you have here, mainly the third grade team and Kate, um, they're in second grade in the back too. So everyone really enjoyed doing that. And I was just impressed with how much they liked doing it and really the details. And so those are some of the other highlights that we don't always see that happen in, uh, in school too.
She takes great pictures of the staff. I always forget to take pictures of the staff. I take a bunch of pictures of the kids. But, um, SEL, Ron's already spoken about this a little bit. We have, um, Heidi Jones is doing the pilot in fifth grade, even though she's not part of the SEL team. Jolie Kreuzer's doing the pilot in sixth grade. And on March 6th, we have a half day. Every single seventh and eighth grade teacher is going to do one of the SEL lessons on that morning. So I was just creating the schedule for that morning. So we have twenty-five minutes SEL lesson. So instead of it just being Dave Wagner and Matt Pomeroy being the only ones piloting it, we wanted everybody to have that pilot. So get a little more feedback. It's going to be delivered by eleven different people. So you never know how that's going to work out. But I think that's kind of a good idea, just so that we have more of a, uh, some staff saying how that's done. Professional development on the fourteenth, I was up at the state principals conference in the morning. The staff had their whole, uh, their whole day. They could do curriculum, talk about kids, be prepared for, um, the conferences that we had last week that are invitation only conferences. I'll talk about those in just a second. But I got back at about one o'clock and I was able to meet with each teacher individually between one o'clock and the end of the day, just to find out what they needed, reintroduce myself because I had been gone to the training with Lori and Jackie on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then I was at the state principals conference on Thursday. So, um, we already talked about mid-year SLO, PPGs. It's amazing when you sit down and talk to teachers and they bring in their results and they're either like, this is amazing. I can't wait to continue to do this. Or Jay, I really need some help because what I thought I was supposed to do is just not working out really well. Very, very positive meetings that way. Um, we're still talking about, um, potential scheduling changes for next year and what that might look, look, look like. Um, haven't gotten to the teacher level yet, which we will be getting to soon. I just mentioned restored practices training. It was incredible to watch, um, to be a part of those meetings because I got to be an actor, Lori got to be an actor, and Jackie got to be an actor or actress, I suppose. And, uh, just trying to see how this all works. And I've actually used, um, used that, I used that this morning with some students that might have had an issue on Friday afternoon. They may have had an issue, I'm not really sure, but now they don't have an issue any longer. And then, uh, we had a number of staff that have just left, um, I didn't include, oh, I didn't include Kate on there. Uh, those people mentioned Colleen, Michelle, Scardino, Brian, Clint, Kate, Corinne and Mary are all at IDACON, which used to be called ICE, the ICE Conference, Donnelloy. They're presenting about the great stuff that Merton's doing. So they're going out, um, spreading, spreading the word of, of the Merton joy that we have. And, uh, so Colleen and Michelle are presenting together. Brian's presenting with Mary, Kate's presenting with Mary, Corinne's presenting with Mary. Ron can't present with Mary, so Mary's going to present with Mary. There's just, there's a bunch of different things. So, um, and that conference is amazing. There are so many people there and so many great ideas. So I know they'll be bringing a bunch of stuff back.
One thing I was going to say is about the restorative practices. That's something that I use as well. There's on the scale of, it's really around this idea that the child or the people involved are able to come back and fix the harm that they've done and go forward. It's not so much about punishment or compliance. So I think that's really important. So it was great to hear from Lori too about how that conference went. Because it's something that we use. I know that I've used it. Someone even here saw me using some of that practice too. So good highlights at the primary. So we have a small group instruction in Ms. Phil's classroom. You can see that that's where we're trying to continue to build that most, the best learning that we can have, the best instruction is one-on-one or in a small group. So we want to decrease the large group learning as much as possible. So we can free our teachers up or the teacher frees up so they can do a lot more instruction. In fact, the, where we said the magic happens, one-on-one or meeting them where they're at. And indoor recess, this is in five K in Ms. Phillips' classroom. She has brought in all these different kind of interactive things. And she said they were kind of old and she didn't really think a lot of kids would like them, but they love them. They have hopscotch going on, they have a bowling going, and so it's really nice to be in there and hear that during indoor recess. Second grade, we have Arbor here and he's working on money and time, which is something that continues to build on those concepts, especially around place value. And so that's where we introduced those and they're, they're working through that pretty well. At our good character assembly, it was all about that the, this month is being exceptional, a Merton value. And you can see that we also had, um, I'm not sure if we have one in there. Oh, no, we have, we had also our intermediate school students come in, talk about the carnival that's happening too. So again, kids volunteering, try and make those as interactive as possible, short, efficient, but interactive. And then again, the Hundredth Day of School Learning posters, these posters were so well done. Like I was kind of embarrassed what I had done with my own child because when I saw these, I'm like, okay, who's, some of them are interest. But anyway, so they were just well, and they were so proud of them and I just, I think they're great. So it's really nice that we're a hundred days smarter. So. I think I might have done that one. Yep. And so then we are looking at in four K, writer's workshop launched in, um, January and then they're really into the full swing. So we balance that with handwriting. So those are the two things we give a little bit on handwriting because we've been doing that all year. So in four K, we start writer's workshop. And this is all about, Ron Hogsday, um, she's writing about right there. So she, and that's really what it means to be a writer in four K, we're sketching, to know that we're putting a picture that has meaning. And then first grade, they are still working on their handwriting. Who's the group doing that? The second grade went to the GSI field trip, um, to, and thank you to Mary Iwansky for setting that up to learn about some of the different processes around, um, change and things like that. And then first grade dentist's office, and I just thought this picture was hysterical. We got a child in there, they, everyone's comfortable with each other. And that's a trip that they offer us and they, so that's a really new thing. Kids love it. They can back with little bags and stuff. So those were some of the highlights of, of this class.
Um, and we have some pictures here. I don't put all these nice little captions there. So actually I have to look and figure out what it is that I put up there. But, uh, the foods class in eighth grade, sixteen kids. They have one, there's one class in the, uh, in first quarter and one class this quarter. They just have a great time. Mr. Biddy got to come in and be a taste tester.
Boy, I have to say.
So the kids actually developed their own recipes. They're given, I mean, Mrs. Cardino runs this, so it's math. You have this much money to spend, so you're going to have to do the shopping before she goes and actually does the shopping. So, um, I'm not sure what they've greeted there, but it must have been good because most of the plates are empty. Okay. Uh, next is, you guys ever heard of Newton's Cradle before? That's the thing where the balls hang down and move. So in, uh, in this science class, seventh grade class, they watched Newton's Cradle. Mr. Wagner had that going and then they had to do some writing about why they think it happened that way. The picture on the right has Sarah Caspers with one of our book clubs, our kids. And both fifth and sixth grade right now are, are heavy into the, uh, the book club conversations. And just listening in, and, and when I have these conversations, I have not read almost all of the books the kids are reading, but you can still have a conversation with a kid about what they're reading. It's just, it's just, and they'll light up. They'll tell you the whole story. And you just don't, even if you don't want to hear the whole story, they're going to tell it to you. On the left was the Great Chocolate Milk Debate. Yes, we had that again. And the fifth graders, every single year think that this is like legit, Mr. Losick is going to decide. But I always come up with, I mean, they had a couple of really good, good ideas this year, but, uh, the, we do still have chocolate milk. I get to go up and make the big check mark on the piece of paper up there. Um, I love going in and watching John jump, um, with his band. And they've got a concert coming up March 10th. If you have an opportunity to come and listen. But he does not just direct from the podium. He directs from all over. He'll direct playing an instrument. He'll direct playing the drums. He'll direct sitting down, making sure the person is doing what they're supposed to be doing, just good stuff. Um, Rowan, you happen to be in this picture on the right there. So this was Shark Tank that just happened last week. So, uh, Phil came in for that and Corinne Meisner's there, Mary Iwansky's there, Matt Schmiede, one of our eighth graders. And this was, um, uh, cerebral palsy toy that, that the students had developed. And then they have to sell it like they do on the, on the Shark Tank show and then people get money. It's not real money. I'm sorry, but it's not real money. But anyways, it's really cool and I've actually shared that idea with a number of people on the Twitters because they just see the, the power in developing something that could possibly go into production. So that was really cool. And then, um, Mrs. Spindler has made these posters and I saw them in the primary school. I'm like, we have to do something with these posters. So we got another set made and then Mary Iwansky put them in frames. And then Jordan and Darwin hung them up. If you want to hear a great story, go talk to the book emmerick. She will tell you the conversation that Jordan and Darwin had to put those up. That's all I'm going to say. But it looks really sharp, but it's just, there's a certain number of columns in between the, the tables. So it just works really well and the kids notice it right away because it was really kind of a bland looking place, but now it's, uh, now it's pretty sharp.
Okay. So then there's some PTO or community connections. We had Callers Night, which, um, was really well, fantastic crew there. Not only that, we had a lot of staff volunteering that night. So that was really nice. Um, I had Bill as well, so I went a little early, but we still raised a secret. And I didn't cough on anybody's stuff. So then we had Lead With Me that is happening here. It's the man from Callers, his name?
John.
John. Okay. So thank you. But he's always there. He came to lead with me, which is great. But we always get to see some of the, um, learnings that is happening after school for a new opportunity that Miss Kent has provided us. And then we had the Super Bowl, which is really that complete, um, can collection based on who do you think is going to win? And we collected all close to five hundred for our community. So Kansas, so that was wonderful too. The kids were really enthusiastic about it. So those were some of the highlights.
Yeah. And then our community stuff, I just happen to have our basketball teams that they are, they, uh, it's kind of fun because Ron and his son sometimes are the officials for those. And we don't always get the calls. I'm just kidding. They do a really good, they do much flack. But there's, I mean, the kids tonight, there were three games after school. They were having a great time. Um, on the bottom, um, our fifth graders are now trying to make some community connections and they're raising money for a bunch of different things. So these girls are actually talking to the Humane Society to find out what they need and what they can do to try and, um, provide some more things. The girls on the right, that's actually in the commons this afternoon or this evening. Uh, the fifth grade boys team was playing, so they're doing a bake sale during the fifth grade boys game. And up above, the gentleman's name is Tim. Uh, Heidi Jones is doing a Rube Goldberg elective. So invited in, uh, Tim and Phil was there and I think Ron was there, um, just to talk about engineering. So the kids are putting all of these Rube Goldberg machines together. And these guys are here to help them get some ideas. And the cool thing was, Heidi just shared it with Ron and I today, uh, Tim wrote a blog post that went into his company's blog, which is private, so I can't show it to you. But it was, and he sent it to Heidi just to say, I was so impacted by working with these kids that I just had to write about the, you know, being able to go out in the community and giving some things back. So those are the kinds of things that are happening here at the intermediate school as well. And as always, thank you so much for your support. We really appreciate it. And, uh, that's all we have. Right?
Okay, we're now on to new business. We have, uh, primary school roof project. You've got bids in there.
Yep, yep. So we did, uh, we did receive two bids, uh, for our primary school roof project. Uh, again, this is for roof areas number three and number six. Um, the low bid came in with Performance Roofing Systems, who has done the majority of the work the past several years. And, uh, you can see that they were significantly lower. But again, we've had no issues and have had great customer service. And their warranty work has been fantastic and things like that. So, um, this is part of our facility plan and just that ongoing maintenance before things break down. So, um, the question was asked of me, Dean, you asked this morning, is this our last roof project? We have one more. So there's one more at the primary school, which is basically the library, the art room and the music room and the cafeteria. So those lean up to the gymnasium. So we have one big area to do. And, uh, again, we'll continue to assess that and see where we need to, uh, put that in the mix. So just looking for a motion to approve, uh, the board to make a motion to approve the primary roof replacement, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Uh, again, that would deliver it to Performance Roofing Systems. And again, just a little cushion in there, just in case they do come across insulation that needs to be replaced.
Do we need to specifically say it's for performance roofing?
Um, we, we can, if you'd like.
And, and you know, still have a seventy thousand.
Still at seventy thousand, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the primary school roof replacement with performance roofing, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion second. Is there a discussion, question? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, and the motion's carry. We're on to the sixty-six oh-three agreement with the Elm Brook Schools, Special Education Services.
So every year, uh, for the past several years, whenever we do need some deaf and hard of hearing services, because it's a very unique and specialty item for our students with special needs, that is above the expertise of our staff. And again, Elm Brook has, uh, has that expertise and does contract, uh, with several other school districts because it's such a small piece to students' IT. So, um, so every year you kind of see what we're looking at. Again, it's a very basic and, and not a ton of dollars, but again, it is what the students need, uh, moving forward as well. So, uh, just looking for a motion to approve the sixty-six oh-three agreement with the Elm Brook School District for special education services for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the sixty-six oh-three agreement with the Elm Brook Schools for special education services for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
All right. Motion second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion's carry. Okay, then we have one other item you told me.
Sure. Yep. We have the discussion and the approval, and a possible approval of the four K playground service. And just kind of bringing back, uh, what we started talking about last, or continued to talk about last month. Um, and Katie, it seems like the PTO has committed some dollars towards that as well. Um, so if, uh, if we wanted to continue discussing that, we did get, received a quote from Jason Frederick at Forever Lawn, who has done the, uh, the intermediate development primary school back. And that is approximately nineteen thousand dollars. That entails everything except the concrete. We're going to put, not a curb, we're not going to go down deep. We're just going to put a small sidewalk around of about twelve to sixteen inches and about three to four inches deep. So John will have that bid for us at our facility meeting on March 10th. Um, so we would know what that is. But if we were going to move forward, the turf project about tearing up, it would be a complete tear out of the old rubber surface, put a new aggregate, put the, the cushion down and then layer that on top of the turf. And the turf needs a concrete curb to attach to it.
So that means that black thing that's around it all now.
All of those would go down.
It'll all be gone.
Correct. Yep. Yep. Very similar to what we did.
It would be a flat, so it would sort of be brass.
So the molar.
Half of cement and then, yeah, turf.
So very similar to when we did the primary school, we pulled out those plastic timbers.
Yep.
These plastic timbers would go away too.
And, uh, company, they dispose of the, the, uh, surface.
Yes, they will. Yep, yep. They will dispose of that. We will keep the timbers because we try to sell them.
Right.
Or the plastic timbers.
The rubber.
The rubber, yep, that includes complete removal, uh, removal and transport of material off camps.
So we don't have to.
Nope.
So there's one quote here. Do we need to get more quotes or?
Um, I can find some other quotes. I certainly.
I mean, they're going to be higher.
They are going to be higher.
Right. We know, we know we get a good deal because of, you know, parents and all that. Or we have a relationship with them.
I mean, I can solidify.
I don't legally need to.
Well, I can, and that's why I, I certainly can. And I can engage our, uh, we, I've gotten bids from two other vendors before. Um, they've asked about where it's come in and they said, well, I don't know why I keep bidding. So I can reach out to them though, but at least I would have that paper trail.
And they can choose to not, to not bid, but at least we approve that the.
Can the board make a motion to waive the bidding process on this one?
The board can do that.
I don't know. Ask the lawyer. Well, it's your board policy, so you can, oh, it's, it's just our policy. It's your board policy.
Yes.
Oh, all right. Well, then.
I'll make a motion to waive the bidding procedure or process for this particular action. I'll second.
Okay, we have motion second. The reason why I say that is we don't want to set precedent, but we're making exceptions.
Right. And I, it's that exception, we can show the last two projects.
Right.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion's carry.
I'll make a motion to approve the four K playground surface project not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's second. Is there a discussion? Twenty-six thousand is our portion or?